Evening everyone. Welcome to the agenda prep session for City of Lito Council. Wayne Jones, welcome to your first agenda prep session here with the majority of council. And if you want to take over, tell us what you got here and we'll go from there.
All right, starting with we have the, now Jim, please, I may, we may not make this motion.
Yeah, we, my recollection is back in the spring, we already passed a motion authorizing me to go ahead and move forward.
For what?
The Property Maintenance Code.
Okay.
The new one, the 2012. So at this point, I have the ordinance ready, it's advertised, you've got a copy of that in your packet, and it's basically adopting the 2012 Property Maintenance Code. We already have the, what edition? We're not a 2012, but we're in something.
No, no, we have our own housing code.
Okay.
That where we present.
I thought we were using parts of the property.
So we need to have a motion to adopt this 2012?
It'll be presented to you as an ordinance with a motion to adopt the ordinance as an act or as outlined, yes.
And the second item is a motion to repeal the current housing code, which you believe is part of the parcel.
Yeah.
Is this what it's going to replace?
Yes. Yeah, it's chapter 32. We're going to, we are keeping at the, what's it called? The administrative warrant provisions, we adopted those several years ago for abandoned and vacant properties such that a van could not gain entrance and the owners refused entrance, we could seek administrative warrant from the district justice to go in and look at the code violations. We're going to keep that part of chapter 132. And it will be expanded to include not only abandoned and vacant properties, but any property where there may be a third party complaint about code violations. So that part we're keeping, but the rest of chapter 132, the housing codes, all gone will be now part of the property maintenance code.
It'll be replaced or superseded by 2012 International Maintenance Property Code.
Correct.
The third item was, there's a motion, do you need to name an alley? Current resident on 1531, her address is rear Ligonier Street, and it's causing confusion.
The alley's over here by the school, but the alley, yes, if you, I can't think which street comes up Irving, but if you come off Irving, back toward that parking area on the side, there's an alley there. There's one house, Patricia Feeny lives there. It's designated as 1531 Rear Ligonier Street, but it's actually not on, there's another property that is on Ligonier Street. This is just on the alley, so it's going to be designated as Orange Lane.
Okay, now, does that mean we have to, does that mean now we have to waive that?
We have, that alley has been, my correct Joe, that alley has been very well maintained. The alley's leading from the school district.
I don't know where.
Yeah, yeah. It won't be anything new. We did that once before with Frog Town.
Yeah.
And it's primarily for EMS and for postal service and so forth. It's creating some problems, so we called it Orange Lane after the school colors.
And that was?
Couldn't get orange and bracket.
That's a suggestion, that some other names would have been available. Do you have any thoughts on where it's across the lane? Now I can give them those names if they have a choice on them.
Orange sound awesome.
Right next to the L A S. Next to the L A S, more than.
Orange Lane.
He's saying there's an orange one out where he is, 911 might not accept it.
My driveway, where's my neighbor's driveway, Fred Maloney? And I'm right out there on Dairy Town Road. It's Orange Lane.
Oh, yeah.
It's considered a Latrobe address. There might be some confusion there.
We might get changed at that.
Yeah, I mean, it's already Orange Lane, he has, it's a Dairy Town shit, but it's a Latrobe address.
How about Tangerine Lane?
I'm just saying, you may, if you're concerned about EMS calls, that's on the opposite end.
Joe.
Just to bring this up, Ann, John, and I, we can all testify, there are several, several, I can, I was already starting to think of rear addresses in my truck.
But are they truly rear?
We've got one Chestnut Street, we've got one Harrison, we've got one.
But are they truly your rear? Meaning the building, there's a front and a rear on that property.
You've got one right up on 600.
The problem here, though, is here's the property that fronts on Ligonier, here's the alley, and here's the other property. It's not a rear to anything on Ligonier.
You've got one on 600 Main Street, you've got a rear. Chestnut Street, 500. 600 Main.
But isn't a rear of the building that fronts on Main?
He said one of your other buildings, yes, is a true rear.
It is a true rear?
No.
There's an alley across the alley from.
We're talking about Taylor's old home state.
Understand.
Great time, great time. It would be better to make it Rear Irving Avenue, that address, because that's what it is, it's actually behind.
But it's a separate property.
Yeah, but it's.
It is a separate.
Not a rear to anything.
911, when I talked to them, I, that's what we suggested, the Irving Avenue address, and they said they wanted its own name.
So Wayne, what do you have? What's the name?
Give them names so we can decide.
Yellow are already used, I can't remember.
Yeah, yellow are already used, that's what we need on the alley.
No, 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 no.
I can't believe.
There's only like six or seven that we haven't used.
I said, why don't we just call it Feeny Lane, they've looked at it forever.
I hope it, pick whatever name you want.
How about Penny other way?
After the spring.
You've got Banana Way, Barnes Way, Bearcat Way, Benford, Blackburn, those are all ways. Buffalo Way, Bullen Way, Cameron Way, Dalton Way.
No, 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 those are all taken.
Wait, the highlighted are taken?
Yes.
Okay.
There's only like six on the side of it, look on the side.
Oh.
Oh, they're not all highlighted, okay.
Alley names we did not use.
Right, that's.
Fred Lane, Brower Rain Locomotive Lane, Presidents we did not use, Kennedy, Hoover, Coolidge, Reagan, and Nixon.
Trolley Lane?
After, under a tease, Trolley was taken.
Did we use Trolley Lane? Just Trolley Lane on there of the used ones?
B R A I L E R.
No, yeah, Trolley. Like Fred Rogers' Trolley, Trolley Lane, was he used?
I love Fred. Fred Rogers.
Trolley Lane's not on any one of these two lists.
And that's available.
There we go.
Trolley Lane? Okay. You've forgotten that.
Yeah.
All right. T R O L L E Y.
Glad you said that, I guess.
Just like K E L L E Y.
All right, we have, next on the issue is a fence that's encroaching on the right way. It is at, it's the Pavil Presidents, 1636 Bridge Avenue. If I talk to Joe and John, they both believe that it doesn't affect their ability to get to Public Works or Fire Truck. How they made it back in, but it doesn't present, it was a dead end alley anyway.
Yeah, the only issue that I.
That's his area.
Right. Is we wouldn't be able to turn it, if we pulled in, we'd back out, that's all.
Right.
We do that once.
Doesn't that go under the zoning hearing board?
No, because they encroached onto the city right away.
Yeah, it's called an encroachment easement.
We did the same thing as the first, Silman, didn't we?
Oh, we did one right up here at the corner of Raymond and Cherry. Daniels, I think was her name, Mrs. Daniels, she had a picket fence right in the sidewalk area. But, I don't know, there'll be a resolution to that effect. And there's a description where the, it's about three feet into the alley. I've looked at it, I've seen.
Other choices, make the homeowner move the fence, right?
Well, I gave them those choices, I said, you have to move it.
What's that?
I told them, and I noticed that they had to either move it back, or just remove it, or come in for this encroachment, and that's what they decided to do.
Isn't there a, I don't know what to call it, a plant? That big stone edifice that's right there?
Yeah, there's, the pictures show something in the way, so they couldn't put it on the line, they put it back.
Yeah, there's a stone, I want to call it a planter, but I could be wrong about that, but it's big and stone, and it's about this high, and I think that's why they couldn't put the fence right on the property line, because that thing is right on the line. So they moved it out a couple of feet beyond that stone.
That's right. Yeah, but that's probably just not.
Can you figure out what that thing is?
I haven't seen anything.
So they've, is there an application they have to fill out in?
Yeah, he has to have, Jim.
It's basically a letter request, that's how we've had property, and they did submit a letter asking for the encroachment variants, and we've given them all of them. So there'll be a resolution and attached the resolution. I made it a license, so it's only personal to these property owners, it does not carry on once they sell it. New person will have to come in and ask for the sender. It would allow it to exist in the alleyway for as long as they own it.
Jim, would the city have any liability if anything happened there?
Well, we have, if you look at the actual encroachment license, it makes it clear that they, the property owners will hold the city harmless and indemnifies for any harm that might occur. So because the fence is there, somebody wrecks a car and tries to sue the city, they have to indemnize, they have to hold us harmless, the property owner. So it all falls back onto them.
All right, next is the, we've been asked, Joe was asked to donate to the West One Clean Ways, we have 722 gallon recycling containers that aren't being used by the city, we've been asked if the city would donate them to Clean Ways.
Is there any value to those things?
Does that carry out?
Let me ask him.
That's fine.
Are these already contaminated?
Are they the new ones?
Are they the old ones?
They're green ones.
They can be given to another entity.
There was a question relating to the containers.
Joe, what are they doing with those?
What's Clean Ways going to do with them?
They're going to use them for their intended purpose, for recycling. Those containers were bought with grant money. So we cannot take and turn around and sell them for anything, but they can be given to another city municipality for their intended use. So other than that, they're just going to remain a hard place.
And West One Clean Ways qualifies for something we can donate to?
Oh, oh my, yes. And we have, we have a letter in case we're ever audited, what was done with that, I provided the city manager with a letter from them.
Are you still accepting them? Like, can people still bring them up today?
Yes, but we haven't gotten any in a long time, Derek. But if they bring them up, we'll take them. These ones that we're talking about giving are all brand new, they were never used.
Mr. W. Mayor, I think, just to be safe, I want to have a resolution, I want a paper trail, that we have donated to a proper entity.
I think that's what I'd do.
We have, the discussion, the mayor one has discussed about the Halloween parade time, times where they go around and collecting trick or treating. And the last email she sent was saying they were talking about the, having the organizing of the judging portion at 2:00 PM, the parade following, and then, and the question was, did you want to, do you want to have trick or treat at 5:00 to 7:00, or 6:00 to 8:00?
The parade usually lasts till, parades at 1:00 or 2:00?
Usually due to judging, and the parade usually ends like at 2:00, because everybody compacts down here in the fire station, we have everybody, and they pass out treats and stuff. And then usually, it's more of a personal.
I think it's been 6:00 to 8:00.
Last year, it's, it depends on who, you know, when Barb Griffin was here, she had different times, different years, one year it was 6:00 to 9:00, I think last year it was 4:00 to 7:00.
Yeah.
But it seems not. I will honestly tell you, the kids like doing a little bit when it's dark, so you might split the difference. It doesn't matter to us, we're going to be there to help and patrol, so, but it's just preference of whoever, you know, wants to do it.
I was just asking, Mr. Jones, pardon, the wrong daylight savings is still in effect, so the earlier time might provide a little more daylight for the kids, and about 5:00 to 7:00.
Does the parade have to be that time?
That, I believe Jerry is up to the lines.
Lines, what's that?
It seems kind of goofy to have the parade in the afternoon and then have trick or treat at 9:00.
Kids wait around in their costumes.
Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have anything.
But then again, having trick or treating in the middle of the afternoon.
But it's just. So do we know what the time of the parade is like?
She said that the judging was at 2:00, I don't know how long they would judge.
Judging was at 2:00, and that's before the parade starts?
Right.
It starts down here.
So it's a little later, the parade's a little later issue, that's all.
Yeah. What, usually it'd been at noon?
Like 12:30, 1:00 o'clock, they do judging, and everything, I know everything ended up down here about 2:00.
How long is the parade, John?
About 15. They come from the stadium, and they go down Chestnut Street, they go up Chestnut Street to Ligonier, and they go up Ligonier and come down welding right into.
Right into Central, and then.
Into the municipal buildings law here.
And they have cookies and.
Cookies, punch, they hand out some stuffers, candy.
And they hand out the awards here.
Yeah, and the prizes, yeah.
And sometimes the marching band plays something.
Yeah, they're playing out here in the parking.
So, you know, probably 2:00 to 3:00, 3:30 at the latest.
Yeah, I would say 3:30 at the latest.
So it starts at 1:07, meaning everybody's already dressed. All they're at is 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 7:00. Is there really suggestions or any, something else, want something? What's that? Something, something different, or any suggestions? Nobody, anybody here? I think 4:00, 7:00 we've got to have. Because it'll finish up here, I'm guessing 3:30. Do the kids get home? Or, you know, parents get back to their places? Parade starts at 1:20 minutes. It's 3:00. Say it starts at 4:00. What's that? You said, I don't mean it's going to start at 4:00. Parade starts at 2:10 minutes.
Well, they judge, they say judging at 2:00.
Way before they judge at 1:00.
No, no, they're judging at 2:00 this year.
The parade will probably start at 2:30, 20 after. It'll be about 3:00, then they give out their cookies here until 3:30, and 4:00. That's what I was saying.
Another issue that came up, and then actually the last one on the agenda, is we have an employee that is a mechanic that's going to, this was one of the intended ideas, he's going to retire in November. That's tentative, this is a retirement. And you have another mechanic that has a seniority, takes a good bit of vacation toward the end of the year. So I'm just concerned about having a mechanic during the time period that you need them, which is during the beginning of the year.
I have a note here that I, Joe, I've talked about this before, we brought it up last time, and I think we, it's time that we start getting somebody trained on that mechanic position. And that's what you're looking, would you have to hire somebody to do that, or bump somebody up and hire somebody?
We have to post for what they have, 10 days, and then if there's anyone that would bid on it, if they meet qualifications, they could, and then start being cross-trained. Now, if no one bids on it, then you would have to have, the council would have to make a motion to advertise, and then we get advertised.
And then if somebody does bid on it, and they think it, would have to backfill their position, would have to advertise the bid app position.
Yes, you would just be advertising for their position.
The gentleman's going to be retiring, CFO, blown up mechanic, so when we put that bid up, don't you have to have all those qualifications?
Well, I don't know if they have a job description for that. If not, we can pull one together.
There was a job description, it was never nothing official, and I read over it today, but it's so generic. Let's face it, we need somebody with a CDL license, somebody with a state inspection, somebody that can weld both gas and electric, we need somebody versed in gasoline and diesel engines. We're looking for a top-notch mechanic is what we're looking for.
And we can improve the job description, because obviously, if you do end up either posting within, we're going outside, you need an accurate job description.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if that's the mechanic you're looking for, and you post this, you know, it's got to pass, all this qualification has to be on it. You're not going to say, let's train within.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, I don't know what caliber, I don't know what you have, just willing to bid on it from within, but yeah, you still want to have same requirements.
Might I make a suggestion? Because we run into these problems of time gaps between meetings, maybe just do one motion at the forthcoming September meeting to, and all this would of course be, the motion would be contingent upon the retirement, but to authorize the posting of that position, and if the posting does not yield any results, to then authorize the advertising for the position. So that Joe may find out the day after a meeting that the posting didn't work, and now he's got to wait. Yeah, so we just do it all in one motion now.
I think we should, and encompass that even if it is filled with someone within, and it's successful, that then we would have to post another position, make that part of the, make it all in one shoot. One vote, is that, we'll be, there'll be a vote whether we're in agreement or not, there'll be a vote that night to do all that, and then it's one fell swoop, and we can cover it with one vote rather than two or three votes.
The only thing I'm concerned, to be concerned with is the fact you made the contingent upon retirement.
Right.
Retirement's not going to happen for a while, so you're kind of putting the cart before the horse. This gentleman, and he's saying he's retiring in November, but, you know, he doesn't have to make his decision until that day.
Well, we would do the hiring based on, too. Let's say you hire somebody.
Hire in advance. And if you hire somebody in September or October, and he's not going to retire from November.
I don't think, I don't think the intent, if I understand, is to hire somebody, it's first to post to see if there's interest.
Sure.
Then the next step would be, is that the person that we want to put into the position of the retired, the prospective retiree, and then Joe's going to have to determine when that retirement's going to take effect and when to start training this person. If it's somebody from the outside, same thing, we're going to have to advertise, but if the retirement doesn't occur, we just don't hire.
And Joe's going to have to make a decision how he's going to hand out this vacation to this other guy that takes him in the winter time?
I'm not sure if that's seniority based by collective.
I know there was a. I think he can stop that, it's what you need, and he's needed there, that vacation will hand it out to that gentleman.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, if I haven't, I think in the past it's been disputed, and I don't think the city was successful.
Three years ago, when this started, or perhaps four now, I did deny it. And it went to a grievance, and I denied that, and then it continued, and it was worked out between the union and the city manager at that time, that the employee can take his vacation at the most desired time. I am not happy with that decision, but that's what I've been laced with. And the reason why I went to city manager, and he's talking tonight, if you can see what might, what could very possibly happen, November being winter snow plow time, I can very well have somebody come in that we hire from the street and not even have anyone there to show them where a wrench is, let alone the equipment, plus we've got to get them up to speed on snow plowing and salting.
So if you're looking to get a guy in there a month or two before this all happens.
Yes, yes.
You're not looking to get a contingent upon retirement, you're not looking to get a guy in there the day he retires to move this kind of position, we need him there prior for training.
Now, if the posting is successful, then you have somebody from the inside to move it, because you can move the person over, and you can start training.
Exactly.
But if it's from the outside, you need to have some sort of.
If it's an outside person, you've got to bring somebody early enough to train. So on your stuff, Joe, if you think anybody fits all those qualifications.
I'd really rather not say it this time, but I think it's a pretty tough position to fill with, right from what you.
Now, there is, like you said, if you did, even if you did like a six-week crossover, then we were talking about $4,800 in additional salary, if this is impacting the budget, that's fact. No, you have to make a statement about it. But, you know, it would give you, if it gives you the fact that you have a mechanic, whenever you come in the car, you'd have to.
So then in effect, if we make a vote on this, we're voting to impact the budget? If it goes one way, then we have to bring someone in early. So just so everyone knows, we're voting, it's something that has to happen, otherwise, come November, when that guy retires, and you bring someone in that doesn't, Joe said, doesn't know where the linchpin is or wrench is, and you're scrambling in the middle of the snowstorm to try to get the streets plowed, training this person to.
Actually, by the other mechanic being off on extended vacation, we don't, you know, without, without actually me going in a shop, we don't have anybody to start acclimating into that position.
Joe, what's the likelihood that this guy's retiring? Guy or girl?
Very good. He's retiring, it's, it'll be sometime here through November through the beginning of the year. It definitely will not be past the beginning of the year.
So it could be September, October.
November.
Or it's definitely November.
I'd say more like November, I talked with him, I think it's more like November.
He is indicating November.
Yes.
But, you know, as the city manager said, there's, that doesn't mean that it's etched in stone.
I know, I understand that, but I don't see how we can be stuck with that, with somebody not able to plow streets, or, you know, there's a lot.
That's why we're trying to react now.
Just getting any truck in, no. Like, who changes the blades on the, who has to change the blades on a plow?
If the blades are set up or prepared and punched out, a driver can, it takes two to do them, a driver can do it. Usually what happens, the driver and a mechanic does it together. It's a two-man job.
And how often is that done?
I get about 12, 16 hours out of one side of the blade, and then it has to be rotated, and then you get about the same on the other side, and then it has to be changed.
That's why I think.
And that's why we're trying to do this early, and get someone in there, so whether it's, whether it's somebody inside, if they meet the qualifications, if they don't meet the qualification, then we have to move the outside.
If we find someone inside that meets qualifications, we're still going to have to hire somebody to take their position?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be?
I certainly believe so, I think, I think right now that I'm running with a skeleton crew, I'd hate to deal with another body less.
I don't want to make you do it with another body less.
I mean, with less critical with, I mean, you have to admit, it'd be less critical to do without a driver as opposed to without a mechanic. Mechanic is a greater need. I'm not saying neither, I know you get a lot.
When there's no snow, yes, but when the snow's happening.
Well, being, being everybody's cross-trained, the mechanic is also a slash driver, snowplow truck driver, but being a truck driver doesn't give that guy qualifications to be a mechanic.
So you know how you're going to work that, Mr. Jones?
Not exactly, but I don't know, come tomorrow.
Jim needs help, can he subcontract it till he gets help?
Yes, get that okay from the union.
Yeah, I don't know how to contract this, I don't know if that's a viable option with the contractor.
Well, you know, contracting is, you know, contracting always is an option, but if you're, if you're snow plowing tonight at 1:00 in the morning, and your truck goes down, do you repair it, or do you wait to call the repair garage in the morning at 8:00 when they come in, and then be told, well, bring it up Thursday? I mean, you know, there's a lot of advantages to doing your own in-house work.
And that's just one instance, the other instance, I knew they do police cruisers, they have fire trucks, they do a lot of, in and out in the day, back in the day, a lot of trucks are.
We do 50 some pieces of equipment we maintain.
Hours?
Yeah.
What's that, Joe?
We, we're responsible for 50 some pieces of equipment, fire, police, public works, some park and rec work.
Do you have the status of Murphy's Bridge update? Any update for that, Joe?
Pardon me?
Any update on that Murphy's? Any update on the Murphy's Bridge status?
No.
They got the center builder's.
I do know the Kingston Bridge will be done long before ours.
I didn't know they'd near me a time out once. They haven't given you any update on the timeline?
No, but I will check into that this week.
It was in the December, it was after the first of the year now. After the first of the year, they, they made an adjustment. Anything else? Why is it, my, is it Kelly?
Yeah.
Okay then. My, Jerry?
What's up with Jacob's house? Are they, they're probably going to fix it up?
They're repairing it.
When, when are they going to take those trees, those shrubs off the sidewalk?
They, I called them the other day to do that, they started to.
Yeah.
Get rid of them.
Were they on their second dumpster?
I don't know.
Third.
Third.
What about the last meeting, there was a gentleman in here from Thermal Street concerning, concerning the property.
Yeah.
Is there any update for that?
I cut the grass, I look at it all the time, there was a piece of siding falling off, I put that back on, I.
Said the windows were open, was that, was that the case? I didn't, I didn't look at that, but I thought you said there was.
No, the piece of siding was flapping.
But there was animals coming in out of basement?
I can't find any holes or any way, I put grass twice in down Friday and it's still there today. So I don't know.
What was that number?
I know, I know, I've seen since that meeting, Mike, I've seen the Orchid Man at his house a couple of times already.
That gentleman who's talking?
Yeah, bigger fella, Miller, Miller is his name.
What about the smoking in the parks, containers? Are you going to bring that up to me?
I think Ron, Ron gave a suggestion to something to the county.
Well, I have some input on the, the, on Mr. I gave, Council Act a couple weeks ago, that people can make to see the city in control of smoking in the park, I was under-concentrated on this thing down here, I had to read that article from Mr. Smith, I stopped and talked to her, she discovered a real problem, she lives right across the street from the park there on Lincoln Avenue, and she had to call the police, and the police came, but I don't think we should get the police or the target department involved, I think we should get residents involved, and to keep you an idea, I take my grandsons and grandfather down the park every Wednesday in Thursday, I sit on the bench, there's twelve butts on the, on the ground, if you walk that park, there's fifty butts on the ground, fifty cigarette butts on the ground.
It's no different than a potato chip bag or a pumpkin, that's littering either way.
I didn't know, after spent all those years with the city, I didn't know there's a two-hundred dollar littering fine. So you take fifty cigarette butts times three hundred, that's fifteen thousand dollars. We don't want to take a chance on any more fires down there and so forth, so, and we want to stop people from smoking because that's really something. We go something like the dog bit, where you get fifty-dollar fines on, pick up the dog waste, I probably have twenty-five dogs walk by my house every day, and every person has a bag. So I think in about ten years, I see one or two dogs do something, and the neighbor will come out and say, hey, there's a fine for doing that, you better pick up, that's the last time that ever happens. So if the city was, look, maybe establish something like the dog waste, okay, that would bring the resident charge, I know if, if you can't stop them from smoking, but you control the smoke, and the foundation said they'll buy the benches, put the stone in, everything's almost possible, it would cost the city nothing, but put an area in where you can smoke and there's no smoking around, where the kids aren't, because I don't think that's right, so, and that would, that would save the police and that would save the fire people, if the residents would get involved.
Can I, can I comment on that? I have two smoke kids and I go to the playground all the time and I'm just as disgusted as you are, but I think a lot of it too, people need to be responsible for their own actions. Like, I have lots of family members that smoke, but they make sure to take their butts and remove them properly, or, and they don't smoke around my kids, they don't smoke around the playground, they go to other areas in the playground where there's no kids, like near the van shelter, but they take care of it. I think too, we have to put some responsibility on those who choose to smoke to take care of that.
They smoke down this park.
It's disgusting, isn't it?
We have.
I have two kids, I can't stand it.
We have an ordinance that are ready, littering, is that correct? So do we have to find any signs posted?
There are signs down there.
In the park about littering?
There are signs posted about dogs not allowed. You see, there's, there's signs over there about dogs not allowed walking on a path, and every day you just watch them going up and down constantly. I mean, you know, you could put signs up forever.
As I said, so you, so are we going to make a law to enforce a law? See, that's, that's ridiculous. If you're not going to enforce the law, you have already, there's no use in making a law to enforce that law.
But we have.
Am I right, Mr. Weimer? I know, I, I, I walk in this park, I walk in this park, I know, and they have a cigarette butt, and there's a hundred cigarette butts.
All best he goes over there and smokes. I mean, we're, we're not going away with smoking, we'll put it in a certain areas.
So, and I think the, the, we already have a, a law, it's just a litter, that we need to use that as enforcement to try to do that, and maybe look at putting some sort of designated area and some containers for smoking, for smoking receptacles.
Well, the thing I want to watch, I don't want to get the police department involved with people coming down saying that you're not allowed to smoke here. I think residents should do that, I know, if a guy's sitting next to me, and he's not smoking, he's like, I'll say, hey, you better go over there, there's a fine, that's all you've got to say.
I think it's different if you tell an elder gentleman to quit smoking, or if you tell a young kid he quit smoking, he's going to go to hell.
Right.
I'm sure the older, older gentleman will tell you to go to hell because he's been smoking a lot longer.
The kids, the young kids might have a few choice for it.
I think we should maybe look into seeing what would take to put up some littering signs, reminding people that there's a fine for littering, there's an old fine for littering. And then look at the possibility of somehow, whatever it's through, I guess, I don't know if Council Department would do, designate a area. Is that going to be a different playground? Is that? You're going to designate an area? Well, I don't, that's what I've got to, you know, just.
On the map I gave you, back towards the parking lot, it's in the playground, establish a fence there, it's about a fifteen-foot square, same type of fence it's upon the parking lot, two benches and a cigarette trash container.
Is that, is that, is that down at the playground down there?
Right.
Yeah, how about fifth one?
Well, the one out here, we haven't looked at, okay, I mean, we have to look at every one.
Yeah.
Especially the one on Terry's.
So do you do anything this year about the geese? You're not allowed to shoot them. I mean, I feel sorry for those kids practicing over in fields.
Yeah, try running down here on a path, it's not too bad right now.
You can't walk, it's like a minesup.
Oh yeah, I thought maybe we could fire.
One of them kids got to play on that grass or something. I don't know if it'll remove it all, but.
Jeanie had a, she buys an hour or a, some, some kind of statue over at Garden of Park and somebody stole it. Yeah, coyote, somebody stole it, that's bad over there too.
I think dairy used dogs for a while, didn't they, and they, they sort of eliminated.
Yeah, I was going to say.
And it got, the greens were used to come up.
Joe, did you get a cost for some, some littering signs and bring, you know, just to see what we'd need to put in, and again, have to go for all the parks, one littering reminder up in all the parks, I would say, get a cost and a couple of signs for each one, and so we know what that impact going to be, and I thought we talked before about seeing if there was receptacles available through someplace like Westmoreland Cleanway, but there was that Young Lungs at Play or something heavy.
Yeah.
Might have some receptacles in it, and again, if you put a receptacle there, who's going to empty it, who's going to walk up? That's embarrassing, more.
Well, you know, things need maintained, it's nice to put a recycling bin out, but who, who, who picks it up every week and who goes through it to make sure it's recycled? And then what do you do with the material? Same with these smoking receptacles. You know, somebody has to maintain them and clean them and empty them.
The properties that the Skelton District comes, don't they have that, the warrants in their, their rules and stuff, where you know tobacco products in their stadium or fields and stuff like that, don't they have that already?
They may, I.
So is that, is that from the city of Lake Trope, the police there areas?
Well.
I'm just asking.
Cigarette trash bins, I asked a couple owners who have restaurants and they have two trash bins sitting out by the doors, and he empties it himself, when he does, he pours it in the water, he stops here and leaves it for some water. But there's no signs anywhere else, I think that's a big problem, get back to where, what's going on?
So if you could get, just get together some pricing for some signs, Joe, and then we have to talk about the logistics of if we decide, if we would ever decide to put a designated area there, you know, there's a cost to that, and then you put a receptacle, who's going to do all that, we'll just put all this together and see if it's even, it sounds like a good idea, but when you look into the nuts and bolts of it, how do you do that? It might look good for a month and then next thing you know, that everything's overflowed and it looks like hell again. And to maintain it. So if you could just work up the price on a couple of signs and receptacle, and then we'll talk about the labor and everything would go along with that after that.
Who is emptying the recycle bins down there?
Those in parking lot.
Who's, those new recycle bins they got?
I read about it, I read about it in the paper, that they got them, I don't, I don't know who's going to empty them, where the material's going to go, I don't know anything about it, I've never been talked to about it.
And that, you know, it's bad to assume, but I would assume that their, their staff would take care of the recycling bins in their park.
They do that.
They maintain.
Maintenance.
They, they take care of the garbage now, they go around every, every day and empty the garbage and bring it up to the transfer station. I don't know, maybe they're going to do that with the recycling, I don't know.
Anything else for?
Is there anything new on the, the arson fires that we handle in Lake Trope, anything from the state police fire margins?
Still under investigation, all we know.
Still under investigation.
That's what they tell me.
Okay, thank you.
I can't get anything more than that, other than there's still one coming.
Yeah.
I wish I had more to tell you, but I can't, so, I mean, we're still, I mean, it's, it's off, there are any, several where, I've spoken to them several times, and they're still backfiring.
Chief Phillips on?
Yes, just one thing, I was approached by Michael Felice, he's a disaster specialist for the American Red Cross, and he sent me an email, and they would like to do what I deem a prototype in Lake Trope, where a fire department was selected as, as a model to work hand-in-hand with these individuals on what they're calling a safe program. We do fire education ourselves here in town, we have our own fire prevention programs, and I told him, I said, my concern is, number three, for a good example, has been going into the elementary school and putting on their, their fire prevention contest and everything, and I said, we do our own fire prevention, and I said, I don't want anybody really coming in and stepping on our toes or peeing on our parade, so to speak, and I said, you've got to understand, we, we take it very serious about what we do, we have our own fire prevention programs, and, and he said, oh, no, no, we would just like to partner with you to, to further education, and I says, well, I have no problem with anybody working with us, but what their, what their main objective is, is they want to prepare, help prepare residents for, you know, fire emergencies, disasters of house fires and any other, you know, natural disasters, which the American Red Cross does. Their three objectives, but they did put one in for them, they're going to give us these things free, we pay for them on the fire department funds to do that. But I, I think it's a good idea, I just want.
And it's the American Red Cross.
It's the American Red Cross, and, and their, their, their main goal is here, they, they host the community awareness days, they want to do that with us, and like I said, distributing the smoke detectors in partnership with the local fire bureau, which is us, so I just wanted to make you guys aware of what's going on and that, you know, they've selected us, and I don't want to miss the opportunity for us to go somewhere else, so I just thought a good idea for us to do this.
Sounds great. Thanks for letting us know.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Since you have these smoke detectors that you carry around in your vehicle, do we have a way to assure the quality of their smoke detectors or safety of their smoke detectors?
Well, we buy top-of-the-line in Lake Trope, we buy First Alert or the Nightlocks.
You'd have some way to check in there?
Well, they all have to be US, or, they all have a UL rate, we will not buy anything that doesn't have an underwriter laboratory tested later, so anything without that, we won't distribute, okay?
I have a concern of my own, but I, I'm not on the agenda, so I don't know how to get on the agenda or if I need to.
This is the agenda session, this is the agenda session, we're planning the agenda for next month, so.
Well, I have a concern about a property in my block, I live in the 600 block of Walnut Street.
Your name is?
KJ Collimer, I live at 617 Walnut Street, there's a house on the corner of Lincoln and Walnut 601, hasn't been, hasn't been occupied for several years that I know of, I've been living there since nineteen eighty-two, and I just wonder if somebody's supposed to be responsible for that property because it's not been properly maintained, and it's certainly not.
601 Wall?
601 Walnut.
I know the property he's talking about, years back, Jeff Unes lived there and then he sold that and moved up further up one, I don't know if anybody purchased it from him, but I know exactly what property he's talking about.
We can check the tax rolls and.
I don't know who owns it now.
And in Lincoln.
Did it have a barber shop?
Yeah, it had a barber shop, that's the one, Jerry.
That's a problem.
That's it. It's like beige. But I don't know who owns it now, I know Jeff would there, and it hadn't been maintained since he probably. Oh yeah, he kept it up, yeah.
It just makes you.
Yeah.
I can get that on the agenda.
That house has some.
I can, I can take care of that. I'll go look at it and see what's there, it doesn't have to be on the agenda, I can do it tomorrow.
She'll, she'll look, she'll, Anne Howes, our ordinance officer, and she'll look into it, after the meeting she'll get your information, she'll report back to you.
Good.
And she'll, you won't even have to be, doesn't need to be on the agenda, but Anne will, between now and then, um, next meeting, look into it, she'll just need some contact information.
Thank you. You know, with this, do we have any video cameras on the police officers who are on their cars here in Lake Trope? That's just, you know, since everything's going crazy, I have to run St. Louis, I just wanted to, if we have that, those cameras and that, I don't know, Chief's under that.
They don't have a car.
Oh yeah.
They don't have a car, they don't have a car too. I drove around this officer's nursery one time and he showed me how they turn them on in the car.
Good, good.
Derek, where are you going?
Okay, nothing else? Make that a wrap.